Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our border sanitation meeting for Monday, January the 7th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, December 17th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $78,497.11. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the wastewater claims dated January 7th, 2017, in the amount of $78,497.11.
Make said motion.
Second.
What's my name?
You said 2017.
Oh, 2019.
Are you going the wrong direction?
Motion to approve.
Aye. She made a motion.
And second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments. Ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will begin the Board of Works meeting within the next five minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, January the 7th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Board, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, December 17th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have 29 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $955,720.95. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the corporate claims dated January the 7th, 2019, in the amount of $955,720.95.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Tonight, under new business, we have several items. The first item is carryover vacation for DPW. Brad?
I'm writing to request permission for David Watson to carry over five vacation days and one personal day from 2018 into 2019. Mr. Watson has been on workman's compensation from an injury that occurred at work on July 31st, 2018. The new handbook states in Article 8, Section 3, that under extreme conditions, vacation not taken within a calendar year can be carried over to the next calendar year after approval from their department head and then approval from the Board of Public Works and Safety. I appreciate your consideration in this matter.
The floor is open for any comment or questions.
I have none.
What kind of injury did he have?
A back injury.
Is he back to work?
He has a doctor's appointment on the 15th of this month, and it looks like they possibly release him back to work.
Any further comments or questions?
And you do approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Floor is open for a motion.
I'll make motion to pay David Watson, or to carry over his five vacation days into 2019.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Approval to hire part-time employee. The, Dan. Board, the Clerk Trezger has requested approval to hire a part-time person in the clerk's office. This person cannot work more than 29 hours in a weekly period, or 58 hours in a biweekly period, and is not eligible for any benefits. The hourly rate shall not exceed what was approved in the 2019 salary ordinance for part-time employees in the clerk's office. Upon Board approval, the position can be filled immediately. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
We talked about this before the meeting. Is this a temporary part-time, or a part-time, part-time?
It's a part-time, part-time. Hopefully, it'll carry out through the remainder of the years. It'll be approximately 20 hours a week.
Thank you, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
I have none.
Motion to approve the request from the clerk.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Recommendation to hire civilian paramedic, Beech Grove Fire Department.
Good evening, Board. Beech Grove Fire Department would like to ask the Board of Public Works and Safety for the approval to hire one civilian paramedic for our current opening. The starting date would be January 26th, based upon the completion of passing of the physical from public safety medical and background checks. Base pay would not, will not exceed $1,992.83 for this position, and it is funded in the 2019 budget.
That's a, with a... Right. The only thing in there, it is not budgeted in the 2019 budget, but we're going to do an additional appropriation of the public safety fund to pay this new salary.
Okay.
So it just shouldn't say the 2019 budget.
Okay. Well, can we strike that from your copy, then?
Jim, sometimes is it, can you drop, can you drop a new letter off that says that?
I'll bring it by in the morning.
Okay. All right. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. You want to introduce Aaron?
Sure. Aaron, if you want to come on up. This is the gentleman we've selected and is currently going through our selection process, is Aaron Coffey.
How are you doing?
Let him kind of tell you about, about himself.
Hello. As you said, I'm Aaron Coffey. I live here currently on the South Side. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity and looking forward to serving the community of Beech Grove. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron's one of our preceptors with St. Francis Paramedic Program. So, he's actually worked with us for quite a while, so we, we kind of know him. So, besides that, we went ahead and hired him anyway. But, good guy, does a good job for, for St. Francis, done a good job for us, so we're looking forward to getting him on board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. The next up is conflict contract and nepotism forms. How do we want to do this, Dan, just?
Well, I don't think we actually need approval for it. We can ask Craig on that, but it's just standard, and the council will get theirs. And Dave and Dennis, myself and Dave have already filled ours out, and so I don't think we need any action on it.
Okay, but everyone, Sandy and myself and the clerk and Dave, we have submitted all of the required forms.
Right.
For a public disclosure for 2019. Okay, very good. Next order of business is surplus fire equip, or surplus equipment from the police department. Chief, did you want to make any comment on this? This is what IndyTeledata...
This is electronic equipment, computers and things like that, that IndyTeledata said was outdated and not useful anymore for the police department. And they've already had a company come and dispose of the items.
A lot of this was, was any of this the old wireless internet? Do you know?
I, as far as I understand it is. Lynn might be able to answer that better, but it was equipment throughout the whole city that...
What does ruckus mean, besides a fight?
Yeah, that was the old digital city equipment.
Okay. All right. So, everything in the first column is what, of the first page and the second page is what is being asked to be declared a surplus. It has no value. So, I'll open the floor up for any questions or comments.
I have no, I have none, thank you.
I have nothing.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the surplus list for disposal.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if you look, thanks, Chief, and if you look back, go back to page four. Four, five, and, four and five, actually, six. When we surplus the electronic equipment at City Hall, this was the documentation that all of it was destroyed. So, that's going to, that'll be on file for public review as well. So, and then we'll do the same thing when they offer, when they bring the sheets in for what we just surplus. All right.
Good to know.
Thank you. Last order of new business is handicap parking permits. I'll defer to the clerk. These are our annuals, but I think there's four or five here, I'm not sure.
Right. There is, I noticed the first one is a new one. That's Randy Middleton. Next one is, which is renewal, is Jackie Rush. Next one is Michael Johnson. Next one is Felicia Sherman, and then Kathy Arsenault. And they've submitted all the paperwork they need to have this done, and I would recommend approval.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Do you have a comment? Dan, they all say parking for 2020, for the year 2020.
Right. They're, okay. I know, and I'm not sure this is what happened, Ed Bell ordered the handicap parking stickers, and the new stickers say 2020 on them, so they're good for all of 19, there's...
Expiring under...
Yeah, expiring January 1st, 2019. But I think they've ordered new ones, and once they do, then, you know, but it's for the calendar year 2019.
He should have ordered 19 stickers, 2019 stickers.
Right. And it was just a mistake. That's first year, I think, compliance has taken over this part of it, so we'll give them a little leeway.
Okay.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the parking permits for the folks listed tonight.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes new business. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No comments. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:16 PM. We will convene on, we were supposed to convene again on Monday, January 21st, 2019, but that is a national holiday, so we will convene on Tuesday, January 22nd, in these chambers at 6:00 PM. The City Council meeting begins at 7:00 this evening. Thank you so much.
Pick your poison.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, January the 7th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brex, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Vida Mascary, Council District 2.
Elizabeth Lampkin, Council District 1.
Chris Duffer, Council District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have four special presentations this evening. The first one is the Council President Pro Tem election. So, at this time, I will ask for nominations for President Pro Tem.
I'd nominate Bud Tevlin.
I'd second that motion.
Any other nominations?
Liz, you don't want?
Motion to close the nominations.
I'll make the motion to close.
Second.
Time to vote, beginning on my right.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye, yes.
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 Yes, thank you.
All right. Bud will be Council President Pro Tem through 2019. Earlier, back in November, at the end of November, we received notification from the state of Indiana that we received a Community Crossings matching grant. It was the second one we received for 2018. This one was in the amount of $89,955. That brings our two-year total to a little over $800,000 that was used to pave local roads and streets. So, on file in the clerk's office will be a certificate signed by the governor and the Commissioner, Joe McGinnis, proclaiming that we received that match and, or that money, and then it was already put to use with the addition on South Fourth Avenue. So, we're up again sometime in January. We will reapply for more grant funding through the state of Indiana to continue to make more road improvements. So, we'll present this to the clerk. I'd like to read a proclamation in the record proclaiming January 20th through the 26th as Beech Grove School Choice Week, whereas all children in Beech Grove should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Beech Grove recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Beech Grove to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Beech Grove, and whereas Beech Grove is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps the diversity of our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Beech Grove has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the United States by millions of students, parents, educators, school, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective education options. Now, therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, do hereby recognize January the 20th through the 26th, 2019, as Beech Grove's School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So, I'd like for that to be in the record as well, please. Thank you. Our final presentation this evening, we have a guest speaker, my friend, who is the Executive Director of the Indianapolis MPO, Anna Gremlins with us tonight, who wants to introduce you to a concept called Vision Zero. So, not only Anna, but the whole MPO organization has been a true friend of this city since I've been mayor, and probably long before I was mayor. And so, I welcome Anna, and Anna has some good information for you, to share with you this evening. Anna, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for having me today as a guest speaker. I am Anna Gremlins with the Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization. What the heck is a metropolitan planning organization, right? Like, it doesn't make sense. We are actually a regional transportation planning agency. So, we go as far north as Arcadia, to as far south as Franklin, to Cumberland, to Danville. So, every time you guys fill up at the gas tank, you pay federal gas tax. Some of that money comes back to the region, and we, as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, are responsible for funding infrastructure projects mostly around the region. We get about $50 million back that we fund these infrastructure projects, and they can cover a gamut of, to roadway preservation projects. I know we've done some sidewalk projects here in Beech Grove. I know we're also looking at some intersection improvement projects as well with this next funding cycle. So, I'm here today to talk about Vision Zero, because just last month, my board adopted this concept. So, it's a national movement, and you'll see in your packet of information, and actually, it's already slightly outdated, is there's over 50 communities nationwide that are signing up onto this concept of Vision Zero. And what it is, is it's trying to obtain zero fatalities and zero serious injuries as it relates to crashes within a jurisdiction. As a transportation planner, one of my foremost things is making sure you guys get from point A to point B, whether you're walking, on a bicycle, or in a car, that it's safe. Like, it is critically important. If you have ever been on the receiving end of, honey, I just got into a car accident, or the car's totaled, I think I'm okay, but I'm just getting to be checked out to make sure everything is okay. Right? These are all very scary, and what we're seeing is that there are things that we can do as a regional planning agency and the locals that help with reducing those fatalities. So, my board adopted a resolution that you'll see will start to focus our efforts on safety within the region. A couple of things that we're doing, we're looking at is actually integrating and have integrated the actual crash data as we look at project selection. So, looking at the number of crashes that occur within intersections and ranking those projects higher than others. Right? So, we are actually incentivizing or trying to make sure those projects get the utmost attention of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. There are a multitude of areas that include collaboration within partners, right? So, external and internal communications regarding how to reduce this. We also know that there's a lot of messaging and training regarding trying to reduce that number to zero. So, we understand that sometimes it's about driver safety awareness, right? We, we, everybody probably is familiar, friends don't let friends drive drunk. We kind of need to take that same message with handheld devices, texting, emailing, right? So, those are some of the very things that you'll see us do as a regional organization. We're actually developing, as a regional organization, for all of our members, a toolkit of items that they can do at the local level to try to reduce crashes and accidents within their region. One thing also is, in springtime, you'll probably see us do an education campaign about, okay, it's spring, like, people are out walking, jogging, bicycling, more, like, pay attention. Right? So, those are some pretty low-hanging fruit items that we know we can tackle. Also, as the planning agency for the region, we're looking at bringing education, so our engineers know how to design properly. Right? Things are changing and evolving. It's not the 1960s design manuals it once was, so we want to make sure that all the engineers are up to speed on the latest designs and things that you can do. Sometimes they're very low-cost things, as pavement striping can help make a roadway facility safer. We also know, and it's interesting, backlighting or backplace on east-west corridors can make traffic signals much easier to see. These are very low-cost items that we can help fund at the Metropolitan Planning Organization that we want to make sure we're making available to all of our communities. You also have the enforcement angle, which understandably is very costly, right? Officers cost money, but I think with the region adopting a Vision Zero concept, you'll see us start to try to pursue grant funding at the national level to try to do enforcement awareness, essentially trying to make sure people are putting down their handheld devices. Speeding, right? We know results in crashes and large number of fatalities. The other thing we're looking at our end is if we are moving forward with a project that's going to try to reduce crashes within the region, is on the backend, we're going to go back and do some analysis to make sure, okay, we said a roundabout or an intersection improvement was supposed to help the safety of the intersection. Did that actually happen? So, those are some things you'll see on a regional level start to take place within the region and nationwide. You're already starting to see some of the, some of the bigger communities, obviously, have adopted this years ago. We are also just making amends on moving forward with the movement. So, with that, I wanted to ask if there's any questions.
So, the education part, then you reach out to schools, and then, I'm guessing, driver's education, available driver education schools, and...
Yep. The idea is really to start with low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
We're still developing the toolkit. We've hired a consultant to assist us with that. We're going to ask that some of our locals, members around the region, help us and see what types of things would be helpful to them. But, education campaign has definitely been one, and one of the foremost that they think that we can make a dent in.
And even like at our local community centers, like, I know, Angel McKenna at our Beech Grove Community Center is, she's constantly looking for things to, to serve the community through that avenue of help and assistance and outreach.
Yeah, I'm going to write that down. Thank you.
And even our, even our, our senior center. Is the Victory Drive in Emerson, I was just looking to see, is that something that you're going to put some attention to?
I don't believe that was the application we received this year. We did receive a couple of applications from Beech Grove to look at the safety aspect. We are actually going to do something similar for all of our members. This is the first time, we just received this data back at the end of the year. So, if you're not familiar with police data, the accuracy of it isn't always right with GPS location. So, we had to go back and scrub the data for the last three years. And so, this is, yeah, the most accurate data that we have and just received.
It seems like that intersection there, Victory Drive and Emerson there by the Lowe's, that's always an intersection that people talk about, at, at problems with, with accidents there.
Yeah, yep. Guys, don't have any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Anna. It's always, it's been a privilege to work with you and, and the MPO, and we look for continued good working relationship. Couple of the projects that we have applied for is we want to redo the intersection, if you can picture this, the intersection of 25th and Churchman and Southern and Church, or Southern and Churchman and Southern and Perkins, that triangle there. And we invited Anna to come and take a look at this intersection with us, and she was in the front seat, and Brad was driving, and I was in the backseat. And we was going north on Perkins there at Southern and almost got hit. The gal, it was a gal going west on Southern, and I don't know what happened, but she just came on through, and if Brad wasn't paying attention, we would have got clobbered. And while that was going on, it was an accident at 25th and Southern, or Churchman and Southern, so... So, that intersection has been bad for a long time, and we hope to receive funding to make it much safer. And then, obviously, we've applied for funding for Phase Two of the Greenway. So, we'll see, we'll know in late February if we are successful, but it's a tough competition. There's a lot of good projects out there. So, Anna, thank you so much.
That concludes special presentations. Council, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated December the 3rd, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And the council will read anybody who signed up to speak publicly.
Yes, Mr. Baer?
My name is John Baer. I live over on Cherry Street with my wife and my grandson, who we're raising. He is in Central Elementary at this present time. Bear with me, I'm comfortable speaking spontaneously to a group of people, but I'm reading from a script, and it's been edited quite a bit, so... I've lived in Indianapolis South Side for 44 years. I've lived in Beech Grove the past 25 years. When I moved here, the schools and police were what made Beech Grove. I still believe our schools and police department are our greatest asset. The one would be hard-pressed to find someone who thinks either is what they were 25 years ago. That is not criticism, it is a sign of the times, also known as, but people in America are more apt to look at the cup that's half-empty today. 25 years ago, someone with a warrant on them or dope on them would never enter Beech Grove. Word on the street in Marion County was Beech Grove Police were Gestapo, and the people that own homes here loved it. I believe that mindset still exists in Marion County's criminal element today, and that is a credit to our modern-day police force. I also believe with the right vision, Beech Grove's best lies ahead. Whether that vision exists in this chamber is a matter that will be deferred at this time. With the right vision, our main street could transform into a smaller version of Zirnsville Village. With our high school having the quaintness of the enrollment of under 1,000 students, coupled with our proximity to downtown, our real estate value should double in 10 years with that vision. People are paying through the nose for found square property without the immediate response and protection our police department provides, without the Little Egan Park facility our city provides. Pictures I've sent and given out are of Killian Street. The first is of a purple truck that hasn't moved in another four weeks. The picture flatters the truck. It is much more ghetto-looking than that in person, particularly with the two partially scraped-off orange times it was tagged to get moved. It got moved off the street for probably two weeks, and now it's sat without moving for another four weeks. Quite an eyesore for anyone who lives and drives down Killian Street. The second is a commercial vehicle that's been parked four months in violation of residential People here were made aware of these incidents two months ago with token action taken at best. These two situations would have never persisted 20 years ago. The public's perception, which I don't necessarily endorse, but surely has some merits that the majority of our law enforcement doesn't live here and that it is just a job to them. Again, I'm not endorsing that mindset, but it out there enforcing our community in a 21st century America perception is 75% of reality. But these two eyesores that persist on Killian Street have not gone on for months if our mayor or police chief lived on Killian Street, or a fire chief, or if any of our police lived on Killian Streets, or if our streets had a routine patrol schedule. Like the signs that say, "Drive like your kids here. Take care of these illegal hillbilly eyesores that are code violations and beautify Beech Grove like you live here." I can understand with the manpower available why every street, every alley, every apartment complex, every business property doesn't see a patrol car at least once a shift, if not to six, eight times a day. All of us know there's no greater deterrent to crime than the physical presence of law enforcement on patrol. I drove every street, every parking lot, around every businesses, every place that I knew of in Beech Grove. No longer took me about two hours. I know there are many mundane tasks for our officers. There are many mundane tasks in any occupation, but the mundane task has to be implemented and performed for excellence to be achieved in all walks of life. I have respect for Chief Schwartz and his office. I do for all men and women in blue. I'm not questioning his leadership or his officer's commitment. But everybody can always look in the mirror, especially those in public service, and find improvement and commitment in implementation of routine, in improving our citizens' perceptions to excel at the obvious and performing the mundane task with detail. We need more police actively patrolling our neighborhoods and alleys, especially in areas of these petty, ass-annoying thefts. The criminal element from within our city fueled by addiction must not only fear being spotted and having police called, but must fear one of Beech Grove's finest pulling around the corner, driving down the alley, cruising through the apartment complex at any moment. In closing, thank you for giving a concerned citizen a chance to express myself, and may God bless our men and women in blue, for the potential peril the criminal element may confront them with, and may its speed be with them every time they put on their uniform. May God bless this 2.7-square-mile piece of earth that the rest of the world calls Beech Grove, but that we call home, and may God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Nobody else signed up?
Anybody who didn't sign up would like to speak? If not, we'll move to committee reports. There was no activity for the ABC. The Greenscape Commission did not meet in December. Compliance Division and Public Safety reports should be included in your packet. Financial, Dan?
Counsel, in December, we paid a lease purchase payment on the senior center bus in the amount of $5,630.98. We also made a payment on the 2015A revenue bond, the amount of $34,478.15. As you may recall, this was the 2005A revenue bond that was refinanced to save the city over $70,000. No additional monies were borrowed. The interest was reduced. Stormwater fund in December, $269,005.19. We are still waiting on the air packs to arrive, so the loan has not been closed yet. In early November, we completed an audit with State Board of Accounts for the years 2014, 15, 16, and 17. It began in October and was expected to last till the end of the year. However, with the information provided quickly and efficiently, they were able to complete that in a much shorter timeframe. Because the audit was completed in a shorter timeframe, the cost will be less than the $14,500 they originally quoted us. The results still have not been released. Counselor Frank Mascari brought it to my attention that new public safety personnel can be paid from the public safety LIT tax. Indiana Code specifically speaks to what can be paid from this fund, and salaries are not listed. But after speaking to Bart Brown, the Indianapolis Controller, and Charlie Pride, State Board of Accounts, both have confirmed that Counselor Frank Mascari is correct. So, an additional paramedic will be hired, and an additional police officer was hired at the end of 2018. An additional appropriation will be done this year to pay those salaries from public safety fund. Also, the state of Indiana has changed the laws regarding the Motor Vehicle and Highway Fund, number 201, monthly distribution. An additional restrictive fund, number 203, must be established, and half of the monthly distribution must be deposited into that new fund. That money has strict guidelines on what it can be used for. Council can forge a starting balance into that fund with all or part of the 2018 remaining balance of the MVH 201 fund, or they can do nothing. If council decides to move part of the MVH 2018 remaining balance, they should understand that it doesn't count towards the 50% of the monthly distribution. It will just be added as additional money. Our total MVH budget is approximately $1.5 million. Our monthly distribution last year totaled approximately $635,257, and I diverted COAT LIT funds in the amount of $361,560 into the fund. The 2019 budget, I diverted $575,000 of COAT LIT funds, and this revenue does not fall under the 50% rule. So, it will remain in the 201 fund. In 2019, we budgeted $520,000 for the roundabout and $183,000 for the Thompson Road sidewalks, both of which the majority should be able to be paid from the restrictive fund. The MVH 201 fund has a balance on 12/31/18 of $409,199. Personally, I don't see the advantage we would be to move all that to the restrictive fund, because I believe we still have to pay engineers' fees and other project costs from the MVH 201. So, I would feel more comfortable leaving at least $200,000 in the MVH fund and using an additional appropriation if we need to at the end of the year. We are currently preparing for the 2018 annual report, updating the gateway, completing the 101R, and completing the pension relief updates on INPRS. It is a very busy time of the year and a difficult time of the year, but it is my last, so I feel relieved with that. The website and other city technical programs crashed over the weekend, but all of it is back up and running. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The bank balance for the city corporation as of 12/31 was $4,882,862.34. The utility account had $663,215.40. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer, City of Beech Grove.
Questions for the clerk?
You say that we have $409,000 in that MVH 201 fund, and you feel comfortable leaving $200,000 in there. Is that to say that you would want us to make a motion to transfer the rest into the...
Well, not at the present time. My thoughts on that was to not let it go lower than that. I want to research this a little bit more. Brad and I had talked about this, and it's something new that the state of Indiana just threw on us. We don't even know all the rules to it yet. We do know that all monthly distributions, 50% have to go into a restrictive fund, and the other 50% can pay for other things. But in that restricted funds, there's a lot of things you cannot spend the money on in there. So, I think at the present time, unless there's an advantage, I would leave it all in there, but, you know, I'm just not sure until we research this a little bit more. I want to say I just got notified on this. It was either the last week of the year or the first week of this year that I was notified of it. Like I said, I know Brad's looked at it a little bit, and he was a little confused, and so am I on it, so...
Okay, well, you'll let us know then?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's another thing we have to act on at the present time.
Okay.
Any further questions for the clerk? That completes committee reports. We'll move to unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. General Ordinance Number 17, 2018, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 17, 2018, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove concerning through streets and stop streets. Whereas often, drivers use 23rd Street as a route to get from Churchman Avenue to Southern Avenue and the neighborhood to the north. And whereas although the speed limit is posted, drivers, for the most part, feed through this area. And whereas a bus stop is located at 23rd and Detroit, and the neighborhood has an abundance of young children in the area. And whereas at least one area resident has approached the council representative for this area asking for help with slowing down traffic. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove to address traffic schedules. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires that the following amendment be added to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Add the following to Chapter 77, Schedule II, Subsection A, intersection 23rd and Detroit, controls, stop sign westbound Detroit, northbound 23rd, and southbound 23rd. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro temp, tested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance 17, 2018, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion for General Ordinance Number 17 on third read. Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Dennis, you ain't got an addition?
I do.
Oh, you do?
Somewhere.
I didn't have one in my bag. I didn't have them signed in fact.
No, no, it's right here.
Oh, okay, good.
Commission. At the previous meeting, the president went through the budget with you, and we tabled it. So, tonight, I would ask that we present it again, and you approve it. And I'll just go through it real quickly. 2016 bond payments, $513,300. Greenway Works, $65,000. Crossroads Engineering, $32,500. Beech Grove signs at Interstate 465, $44,000. For a total, 2019 budget of $654,800. And I ask that you approve that this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2019 RDC budget.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, the first item is council appointments for 2019, and at this time, I will defer to the president, pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the BZA, Greenscape Commission, and the RDC. The BZA has three appointments. Basically, Dawn Whelan, I've been advised, has submitted her resignation. There are two names that we had put out there unless someone wants to correct me or add any other additional names for the BZA. Mike Garrett and Julie Weaver, and they both would like to continue to serve in the BZA. And if anybody wants to add anything or make any comment right now in reference to those I think probably we'll just go individually on each name, and if we can, just signify whether you are for or against, or we can maybe just put it out there at first. Is Mike Garrett for reappointment to BZA? I'll make the motion that we accept his reappointment.
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Julie Weaver. I'll make a motion that Julie Weaver be reappointed to the BZA.
I'll second.
All those in favor. I am the first, aren't I? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign those that are opposed. Okay. Next will be the Greenscape...
Do we still have to come up with one name?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, we will...
The paperwork I had the last meeting said that Dawn was going to continue.
The mayor, can you follow up on that any?
Dan and I received a resignation email this afternoon.
Oh, okay, well.
Okay.
I guess we'll have to be looking for some names, huh?
Yeah. And just for you guys' help, this is a meeting that happens once a month, the first Wednesday at 1:00 of each month. You know, a lot of times, we may only have three or four meetings a year. But anyway, you might want to make sure that whoever decides that they would like to do it, that they're available at that timeframe.
Okay.
I know there was Tammy Smith. She's Arsenal Group, works for Realty, associate broker. I know she was here at a meeting and voiced an interest in serving on a board.
She cannot do it. She does not live in Beech Grove.
She doesn't. Okay, well, you already know that. Okay, because I wasn't sure of her status of residence. Thank you.
So, if anyone does have any names or anyone that might be interested, as soon as they can get it to us, maybe we can get it out by email so that we can act on it. Greenscape Commission, Sanjay would like to serve again, former. And she attended the last council meeting, if everyone remembers right, okay. Would like to serve, I should say. She's not on the Greenscape. And I believe, Mayor, is that correct, we're saying there's still a vacancy on that?
If you put her on there, it's full.
It is full, okay. I'll make a motion that Sanjay Fulmer be appointed to the Greenscape Commission.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Okay, well...
She's not anymore.
I might check on that. Final, the Redevelopment Commission. We have two names that would like to continue, have no other names that I'm aware of. That is Don Webb and Tara Wolf. And did I pronounce that right?
Tara. Probably Tara.
Tara, okay. I know you by sight out there, but... So, I'm gonna... If anybody have any questions or comments they want to make before I make motions? Or would anyone like to make the motion themselves?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tara.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Don Webb, like to make a motion that Don Webb be accepted to the... Continued to be accepted on the RDC.
I make a motion to accept Don Webb to continue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Mayor? We're done for this.
Thank you. Next order of new business is Resolution Number 1, 2019, concerning Vision Zero within Indianapolis MPO. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution Number 1, 2019, is a resolution that is in support of a regional Vision Zero initiative in which communities strive to reduce motors, bicyclists, pedestrian, transit users, and other transportation-related deaths and serious injuries to zero. Whereas Vision Zero is a simple yet ambitious idea that will attempt to reduce the number of traffic deaths and serious injuries on our roadways. And whereas our city council recognizes that traffic deaths and serious injuries are not inevitable. And whereas Vision Zero provides a framework for reducing traffic deaths and serious injuries to zero while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. And whereas the Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization will create a Vision Zero toolkit in its 2019 to support its members with resources. Whereas the moving ahead for progress in the 21st Century Act, MAP-21, emphasize safety on our nation's roads by requiring that states and regions adopt and establish goals to try to reduce traffic-related deaths and serious injuries. And whereas the Indianapolis Regional Transportation Council Policy Committee is the approving body for all transportation-related activities in the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Indianapolis urbanized area, including the city of Beech Grove, under applicable U.S. Department of Transportation regulations. Now therefore be it affirmed that the city council for the city of Beech Grove supports a regional Vision Zero initiative in which communities strive to reduce motors, bicyclists, pedestrian, transit user, and other transportation-related deaths and serious injuries to zero. Now therefore be it affirmed that this resolution only applies to the Vision Zero Initiative project. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this resolution is approved immediately after passage by the city council, signed by the council president, pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Resolution Number 1, 2019, is up for approval this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1, 2019.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Resolution Number 2, 2019, is up for approval this evening. This is concerning encumbrances for city council sound system, air pack principal and interest payment. And I'll defer to the clerk for explanation. Dan?
Actually, what this is, is I know Chris had brought up about a sound system here in the council chambers. We have not got that done in 2018, as well as the air packs have not been delivered. So, at that time, we had to carry the money over from 18 to 19, and that's actually what we're doing with this resolution.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Are we doing video also? May I just clarify? Is it just sound? I thought Tim was saying that you want to upgrade the video system.
Well, I think it's... And we asked him to come out. I'm just not sure, but I thought that was only on YouTube. I don't think it was anything to do to show live.
Well, I don't think it was just... As far as... I know the recording on YouTube's kind of 2002-esque.
Yeah.
So...
But what...
You want Tim to come out and answer your question? Is that just part of what we were planning to do with the 15,000? I know 15,000 can buy a lot of sound/video equipment.
Yeah. Like I say, we can have Tim come out and answer if he would on some of this because I don't know the first thing about audio or video equipment, so I think he can give you a better idea.
Tim, can you record yourself? Are you gonna be...
Yeah.
Yep, we can. Right now, what we do is, like you said, we record for YouTube. I did purchase a digital recorder that also will allow us to stream live this year, city council and other meetings. I haven't gotten all that tweaked and installed yet. I've also been working with the schools last year on getting their... They have the equipment that the city used to own, which would allow them to live broadcast over the Comcast and AT&amp;T systems, cable systems. And they're still working on trying to get that back up and running. And then we would look at streaming to their facility and then being able maybe to go live again over that. The cameras that we have are, you know, just standard definition. You know, you're right, probably 2005 is when the... Or maybe '07 or '08 is when those were purchased, I believe. So, we could use, you know, definitely some new cameras and video equipment, so...
What about the sound equipment here?
The sound equipment is probably close to 20 years old, and...
Is that going to be included?
Yes, yeah, that would be included, too.
Thanks, Tim.
Tim, do you think this 15,000 is enough? I know we've discussed this before, and I know you bought that one piece of equipment.
Yeah, I would say probably not. It would be pretty tight to do that with the cameras and stuff, but I can begin gathering some pricing and see what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate your help.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tim.
No further questions or comments. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution Number 2, 2019, into the record. Dan?
Resolution Number 2, 2019, is a resolution of the common council of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, to encumber funds. Whereas the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, is a duly-formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana governed by its duly-elected mayor and council. And whereas the council has the duty and authority to maintain and allocate funds as necessary from the duly-adopted budget to maintain the fiscal integrity of the city and maximize efficiency. And whereas it becomes necessary to encumber funds for the fiscal integrity of the city. Now therefore be it affirmed that the Beech Grove Common Council desires to encumber the funds listed below based on the recommendation of the clerk treasurer. Section 1, Beech Grove Clerk Treasurer has notified and informed the council of the need to encumber the following funds for the fiscal integrity of the city. Section 2, that the following sums are to be encumbered for the year 2019. A, Fund Number 101, General Fund, appropriation number 101003400.OOO. City Council Sound System, $15,000. B, Fund Number 170, Air Packs, Principal and Interest, $50,000. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon passage of the common council, signed by the president, pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2, 2019.
Make said motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
At either the... I can't remember whether it was the November or the December council meeting, you approved a resolution allowing me to proceed with the RFP for the potential sale of the utility. And it was a twofold process. One was to see if there is anybody who is interested in buying it, and two, what would be their price to purchase the utility. So, I reached out to my friend Todd Bertrand, who's with us this evening. And Todd is with the Conrad Advisory Group, and they do this type of work. So, I wanted to enter into an agreement for professional services concerning the RFP because this is over my head. So, Todd has experience with this, and I asked him to come tonight to explain or introduce himself, to go through the process and what we should expect from him, and a step-by-step process of how this plays out. So, without further ado, I want to introduce my friend Todd Bertrand. Todd?
Members of council, as Mayor has noted, my name is Todd Bertrand. A little bit about myself is I've been involved in local municipal government for nearly 30 years, and I know by looking at me, there's no possible way. I probably started working when I was 10, so I'm not nearly as old as what my years of service might indicate. Mayor is correct. My background and familiarity with these sorts of projects, which are highly complex, very emotional to a community. I, by day, I am the chief of staff for the city of Westfield, and I was the project lead for that privatization for the city of Westfield in 2012 to... In 2013. Most recently, having formed in 2014 my consulting firm to give me the ability to do this and share this knowledge, I recently was part of the privatization for the town of Sheridan, both water and wastewater. Its system closed for $10,750,000. Their system was very distressed in so much that they had to invest needed capital that would have increased their rates 125%. So, in my familiarity with Mayor Buckley through the years and various meetings, he asked me to see if I would engage, and if you would allow me to engage in this process, which is highly prescriptive by statute. There are certain things that we have to do and undertake, and one of those first things is a request for proposal. Let's see what interested parties may be out there to acquire the system, and then also just take our time in being very thoughtful on how we navigate through the possibility of privatizing your wastewater collection system. I'm very familiar that you do not treat, therefore you don't have a treatment facility, but you collect, and you are in a treatment agreement with Citizens Energy Group to treat your wastewater byproducts. So, and you can stop me at any time. I'm very comfortable in front of legislative bodies such as this, but a conceptual timeline could be as aggressive or as protracted as you would like. We would develop the request for proposal, getting all the relevant details. If you have approximately 4,300 customers, we would get the description... forty-three hundred customers, uh, we would get the, the, uh, description of the assets, any lift stations and things of that nature, the types of customers, all the financial data that's, uh, related to the wastewater system. We put that in a, in a description of, of, um, the project and what our intended outcome, uh, might otherwise be. Uh, we would make that request for proposal, uh, known to interested parties. Uh, it very well could be Citizens Energy Group, uh, it could be Indiana American Water, it could be Aqua America. Uh, there are other, other utility firms across, uh, the state and quite frankly, when Westfield undertook this project in two thousand twelve, they had several, uh, companies from across the country, uh, look at it. Um, then we would, uh, we would give a certain amount of time, approximately sixty days, um, for, and it could be as long as we need it to be, uh, for those interested parties to formulate their response, do site visits, uh, look at the assets, uh, do their due diligence process, and then we would review those offers. Um, we would, uh, develop, uh, we would negotiate, uh, and the law is very prescriptive and, and your, your attorney would obviously guide that process, but the law is specific on what we can and cannot do, uh, and the disposition of those, uh, that infrastructure. We would negotiate and we would develop an asset purchase agreement and then, uh, certainly in that amount of time, we would also engage with your citizenry, the ratepayers. Uh, I think what serves us well, uh, my two times of doing this with success is being very upfront, very open, very transparent, having access to the data, that what do rates look like? Because at the end of the day, uh, people want to know, how does this affect me? How does it affect my bottom line in my home? And as I mentioned earlier, my previous, one of my most recent project, those rates would have increased a hundred and twenty-five percent for a community whose free and reduced lunch threshold is forty percent. So forty, so four out of ten children in the school corporation in Sheridan, uh, would have seen a hundred and twenty-five percent increase to their costs, uh, in their water and wastewater in their household. So that was a compelling, um, set of data for that council who, by the way, I can tell you was, uh, completely opposed to the notion of selling their water and wastewater when they first started. And when they voted, uh, to enter into that, that, uh, partnership, they voted five zero four, uh, to, they voted it, uh, the affirm to, uh, create that partnership. So, I think that's an important term that we don't skip by too terribly, uh, quickly, is that partnership. Uh, you will create a partnership, if you so choose, uh, with a, uh, corporation. Uh, those assets otherwise could be taxable. Uh, we will make sure to see what kind of, uh, if they, if they come as an investor-owned utility. And then, and what's most important is it will be in regulation. The Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission will have governance of, just as they do on your gas utility, your telecom and your electricity. Uh, that gives a, a line of defense, um, to ratepayers. Uh, today, as I understand it, you are that line of defense. Um, so that's kind of a high-level macro view of what a project like this, uh, it, it's so much more involved than what I'm going to get into tonight. Uh, but that is from beginning to end, it's, that's the process by which you would undertake, uh, to give serious consideration to creating that partnership with a, a willing buyer. So, mayor, if you, is there anything else I may have left out or any questions the council may have of me?
We have a question.
Any question out here?
Yes, sir.
Privatizing is another word for selling?
Yes, sir.
And you make your living by brokering such deals?
Not my living. No. And, and let's be clear, sir. I am an advocate for the city if, if I'm contracted. I'm, I don't, I don't work for utility companies. I'm by myself. Uh, I'm a local government guy and that's what I do by day for the City of Westfield.
Fair question.
Yeah, absolutely fair question. Appreciate it.
Could you go over your, your terms for the next sixty days?
Yeah, so, uh, this contract that the mayor has put before you is, uh, a ninety-day contract, uh, to engage me to pull all this data together, write, write the, uh, RFP and get it to the point where if you decide to take it to the marketplace, uh, I would bring that to you. And then it would be a separate, the mayor desires to have a separate, uh, engagement with me if we move past, uh, once the RFP is put together. So it's, it's a ninety-day window and cancel within thirty days, uh, either party.
Did you have any involvement with the Indianapolis?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
No, ma'am.
And then with Sheridan, public outreach and public notification. So did you have public meetings?
We sure did. Uh, that project, uh, Madam Counselor, took four years, quite frankly. Uh, in, in that amount of time, they changed law firms, there was a council change, uh,
sure.
There were a five-person council, three of those seats changed in that amount of time. And, um, I was very careful not to be too hurried in that process. And so we had, um, not only did we post everything online and, and made presentations in the council chamber, then we had two separate, uh, public education forums, one at an elementary school and one at their community center to a, answer any questions that the, the community may had, uh, may have had relative to the rates that the town would have to charge going forward versus the rates that a, a new buyer would have, uh, would, would be charging under regulated, uh, terms by the, I U R C.
And, and that would be, that would start after the RFP is completed?
Yeah, we, what we would want to do during that request for proposal, we would ask any potential buyer to show us what their rates would be over a five-year term under regulated terms. So then we have a reference point of what would their rates be versus what your rates under your ownership would be. As I understand it today, due to your, your, uh, treatment agreement with Citizens Energy Group, you're basically subordinate to whatever fees they impose upon you for treatment, as I understand that. So you have to raise your rates in accordance to their rates to create enough operating capital between what they charge you and what you otherwise need to charge, uh, your ratepayers. So I'm not going to predispose any outcome. However, uh, it very well could be that rates would, uh, stay flat or, quite frankly, we would see what the marketplace would bring us. They could maybe go down. I, I can't predict that at this moment, but there is that opportunity.
And there's, and there's always that, the prediction of the future. I mean, there's, I mean, you can't guarantee that the, the rates will not go up at some time in, in the future, these.
What, well, that is a very good question and what I, how I answer that is, because I'm, I don't own utilities, but I've been involved in them enough. I can promise you that over the long term, I've seldom do I see any sort of utility rate go down. They know, most normally go up, but it, the question becomes how sharply do they go up over what period of time? So you have, if you have a five-year rate trajectory, um, you, you know and have predictability, you just, you are gauging how quickly and how sharply that, that rate of escalation is over that period of time.
Yeah, the increments of increase, so.
That is correct.
Citizens can adjust. And then, and then how about the infrastructure? So, so we will, because right now the, the concern for infrastructure failure, that will no longer be for us to, to have to deal with.
That is correct. The, you, you are no longer, uh, responsible for that. You have conveyed those assets or that infrastructure to another owner who is, now will be responsible for those.
For the maintenance and the upkeep?
All of it. So there are some provisions that, uh, that, uh, the mayor has asked to be put into this RFP. Today, as I understand it, here in the City of Beach Grove, if, if a, a ratepayer has a lateral line problem, they're responsible for everything from their connection to their home, clear to where it ties into the main. We would make certain in the terms of what, how we would want to sell, uh, this, the, the assets is it would stop at the, at the property edge rather than the, the ratepayer having, I say ratepayer because that's what the, the proper term is, be responsible for opening up the roadway, repaving, repairing and repaving the roadway. We put limitations and, so you do have a, 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 a significant amount of control on what you want to have happen after you relinquish control of, of the infrastructure.
And then you said there could be some assets, so to the city, there could be some revenue return through taxable base?
It very well could be that, that absolutely.
Have you seen that in some of the?
Yes, absolutely. So when, when, in Westfield, uh, in Sheridan, both of those, uh, buyers and owners and operators now came as private industry, investor-owned utility, so they're subject to property tax.
And they had that continued? That's, that's not just a, a given, uh, deadline period? That is a continued asset?
It's just like any other, yes.
Comes to the city every, every year or, or however?
Part of your property tax flow. That's exactly right.
Okay, okay.
And I might qualify, you can stop this process at any given time. Uh, that's, I, I want to be abundantly clear, when we were, we were undertaking this process, this process in Westfield and in Sheridan, you are not committing to any outcome at this stage of the game. You are just merely testing and seeing what the marketplace would otherwise bring to you. Um, so I just want to make that clear. By engaging me, if you so choose tonight, you're not committing to anything and you can tell me to leave in thirty days.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, we all know, because you hear it every day throughout the country, infrastructure. So I'm guessing there's a lot of, there's a lot of town meetings just like this with councils across Indiana that are faced or, or faced with, so you are very familiar with.
So I, that's a great question, Madam Counselor. I said on a, uh, panel in, um, two thousand fourteen in Denver, Colorado, about this very thing. And there, at that time, the industry noted, the, the, the American Civil Engineers, uh, Association cited a one-point-seven trillion dollar need in water and wastewater asset infrastructure, uh, in this country. Um, it is not uncommon, uh, because when we had ownership at the local level, uh, governing bodies such as you all, uh, you were responsible. You had to provide all those services. And what has happened over time, uh, this is not just in, in Beach Grove or Indiana, it's across this country, these become less of business decisions and more political decisions because you have friends and neighbors and, and yourselves and you make these decisions, not just you, but councils have made decisions or not made decisions, less about business and more about offending or what will they do to somebody's, uh, income or, you know, elderly on fixed incomes or, or families that don't have, uh, a lot of wealth. Uh, those become very emotional and really is, real issues that influence decisions. Uh, so, and that's why we have seen a lack of investment infrastructure, not to mention it's very old, uh, to begin with, and then being able to have the revenue, uh, sized correctly to go replace mains until, you know, what happens is they, they fail and then you're in a, in an emergency situation, try to replace that.
Just kick the can, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. It's a great way to characterize it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You said at the, at the beginning in Sheridan, it was, the council was not for it all.
That's correct.
I, now, I don't know anything about Sheridan, but I did talk to some of the people in Westfield.
Yeah.
And I heard there was some dissension at the vote when they voted for it.
So that council voted six one, uh, six four, one against. Uh, that was a process that, uh, I will tell you, in that situation in Westfield, the systems were very new because of new development, were very healthy. So one might ask, why would a community such as Westfield sell a very healthy system? Because growth was coming their way and the, the, the majority of the council and the mayor decided that we need to unlock, uh, the value of that asset and use those proceeds to invest in other infrastructure that the private sector otherwise would not. So roads, um, and, uh, trails and roundabouts, so.
Grand Park.
No, quite frankly.
I was told.
Well, I, I know it very, uh, very, very intimately, I know it and that is not, that is not the case. But those monies were not used to invest in Grand Park, infrastructure around Grand Park to support the economy. Uh, today, you'll, you'll see nearly seven hundred million dollars of, of assessed valuation coming out of the ground as a result of Grand Park, but those monies were not used to fund the, the, the capital construction or operations of Grand Park.
Mr. Burton, one of my, first of all, if we go back eleven years, um, and I was on this council, I would have said, put a, put a sign out there and say, take it for free. You got a bunch of old pipes under the ground. But we went through, uh, eight years, seven years in which, uh, this community started to use their sewer utility in order to help pay salaries.
Sure.
And so one of, and I am not opposed to the mayor wanting to, we, we said that we wanted to move forward to find out if anybody's interested, to find out what kind of money is out there. I'm not opposed to that.
Sure.
I'm not opposed to service in this. But what, something just to throw in your mind is my one concern is present day, it is a big, it's a figure in our budget.
Yeah.
Not, not just our sewer utility, but in our general.
Sure.
And so that is one thing that there, that I'm concerned, there has to be something made up on a yearly basis that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's possible. We're not going to get to that tonight, but maybe there's an answer down the road. And like I said before, um, uh, and I, I'm going to mention his name, he's here, one of our former mayors from a few years ago, Mayor Wiley, was very responsible with that sewer utility. He, uh, he didn't, uh, expand out of it for us to depend anything on that other than, uh, made, to take care of those things involving the sewer. So I just want to throw that out.
Yeah, Mr. President, you bring up a very good point and it's not in common for, uh, communities to use, uh, utility revenues to subsidize their corporate side of, of the operation. And it's my understanding that there's about, uh, one point three or eight hundred thousand annually?
It's at least eight hundred.
Eight, eight hundred thousand annually. So what we would do, we would see what the, one thing we would, we would, uh, investigate as part of this process is what would be the taxable income, uh, under private ownership and how that would offset. I think there are ways that, uh, could enter into an installment purchase, maybe with interest over time and using the net proceeds, whatever they may be, to further economic developments. My understanding, you have some, some, some real estate here in the community that's, that maybe today is brownfield, but very well could be used for economic development and incite that in, in further expansion. Um, I, I don't know your community well. Uh, I love your Main Street and I, as, as your city attorney pointed out, I did my homework and looking at the community colors, that's, the tie wearing here is purposeful. I will, I'm unashamed to admit that. Um, but, uh, very valid concern and that's the, that would be some of the analysis we would go through over time.
I just wanted to put that in your mind as well.
Indeed.
Which it sounds like you already wear some of that.
Yes.
Hey buddy, you can get as creative as you want with these RFPs. I mean, if you want to put in there, they need to send everybody a Snickers bar at every address once a month. You can do that. I mean, you can put, you know, whatever you want in there. So I think that we could also get creative with some of these, you know, areas of land that we have around the city that are sitting vacant, um, to maybe drive some investment or some of the revenue from that that we're losing.
I know what the, the, an exercise that, uh, that Westfield undertook, uh, because quite frankly, uh, their dependency on the water and wastewater utility was about two million dollars annually. So it was very much a real issue in, in Westfield. And so a third-party analysis, uh, was, uh, was undertaken to see if the net proceeds, which in that situation was about forty-six million dollars. Uh, if we, if the, the city invested that into infrastructure, opening up more roadways, curb space, and if, once that developed, what would that yield? And so the analysis was it was by far better to invest that money in roads and curbs and sidewalks than it was to even hold it in a very low-interest environment in an, an investment portfolio. And what the, what the council opted to do in Westfield was take those things and put them in short-term laddered investment portfolios and not just drain it all out. It was, it was a five-year forecast of using those net proceeds. So you can be very creative even on the back end, um, of how you, and how and what you would do with those monies, uh, that you would, would see through a privatization and partnership.
So you could create some long-term financial stability for the, for the fiscal city?
You very well can, yes. At the end of the day, uh, you are the fiscal and legislative body and it's however you, and working with your mayor, however you want to prescribe those. But again, once you go through this request for proposal, that would take us, uh, you'd get some feedback, results maybe by July, um, you can always say no. Now, there will be a point of no return once you enter into an asset purchase agreement. That's more of a legal, legal, uh, advisement than what I will give you, but there comes a time where there's a goodwill and intent that you're going to go into this transaction as a joint petition in front of the, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. So you are together. And I will, I, I can't stress enough, this is a partnership endeavor than it is just fix it, forget it and let's move on. Because today you're served by, uh, uh, Citizens' Water, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So are you finding that, that, um, that the, um, the, the contractor, are, are you finding that, that the, the payout or the buyout for some of these, that the year by year, are we at risk of, of losing, uh, potential monies from if the war, the longer we wait, the longer we?
So the.
Kind of the more years that go by and make this decision?
That's a very, very good question and the short answer is yes, because one, uh, appraised approach is replacement cost less new depreciation. So there is an appreciating value that every year goes by, there's less value to, in the marketplace for that. So if you, again, the short answer is yes. If you wait another year, whatever the appraisal comes back at, uh, it may be less than that unless you're investing monies in, just like your house. If you put a new roof on, you, you would expect to get those monies back in some form. If you put a new roof on, you would expect to get those monies back in some form.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
As far as the appraisal, can they sell this for less than the appraisal value?
So that's a legal question. I can tell you that in the Sheridan transaction, that did in fact happen, because they approached it, it with the commission as a distressed utility. Now, there's new law, I say new, it's within two thousand sixteen, distressed utility to allow cities to, what the law says dispose, it uses that term, those assets, because they're, they have been so decrepit, or they are so broken down, that the legislature saw fit to, under certain conditions, to go as a distressed utility. I'm not suggesting that's the case here, I'm just telling you, yes, it can be done, but under certain criteria, and that's more of a legal response than what I'm...
Equity issue with the, with the commission.
What's that?
It's an equity issue with the commission, they would have to decide...
Yeah, so what, so let's talk the process real quick. So let's say you get to the point of, you, we've informed your constituents, you're comfortable with the, the economics of it, the, we've got a response, a very responsive response to the RFP. So now we're in front of, we file in front of the commission. That's a legal exercise, it's an administrative law, if you will, it's like a court, and automatically, the offices, Office of Utility Consumer Counsel, the OUCC, is known as an automatic intervener. So they're intervening on your behalf as ratepayers. So they'll challenge the transaction. They'll say, I don't know that the rates need to be that high, or maybe they should do this, or maybe they should do that. They have a statutory obligation to really scrub the, the transaction, the petition, all for the betterment of ratepayers, your citizens, your friends, your neighbors, you. And so that is a, and so the I U R C has statutorily two hundred and ten days before they are required to issue an approved order. That gives time for the Office of Utility Consumer Counselor to do their research, to file their testimony, we would file testimony, it's a very scripted administrative law process that we would undertake, all public. The I, the, the commission, as they're known, as I U R C, may do a field hearing, I don't know that, but they have been known to do field hearings, take public testimony. This is not just a quick, you know, two or three-sentence activity, this is, this is some heavy lifting, and it is, as it should be. This is impacting your community, it's impacting every resident, fourteen thousand and some odd people, forty-three, forty-seven hundred ratepayers that you have under your responsibility. So I personally don't take these endeavors lightly, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm humbled and honored that I'd be given this opportunity and your consideration. Yes, sir.
Who actually owns the utility? Is it the citizens of Beech Grove or the city of Beech Grove?
That's a really good question. I will answer it this way, based on my experience. The citizens of Beech Grove, by virtue of the council. So ultimately, it's your decision, what you do with it. I think I'm correct, counselor, with an E. By virtue, they're the owners. And by delegation of elected office, you are the, you are the governors of that, of those, that infrastructure.
Follow-up on that, as far as the, never mind, go, go ahead.
Sure.
I forgot where I was going.
The, the short answer to that is, it's the ratepayers, it's the citizens, it's your constituents, it's the, it's the electorate, and they have, they have elected you to make decisions in your, in, in the city's best interests. It's not unlike, you know, your fire protection, any other policy and regulation that you make.
I remembered what I was going to ask you now.
Sure.
Let's say if this appraised, if I'm not mistaken, for fourteen million, five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Okay. If that's the case, and not to slight you in any way, what would keep us from just going, putting a notice in the paper that we are willing to sell no lower than fourteen million, five hundred thousand, and say if we gain a response? I mean, I, I understand what you're doing.
Yeah.
If we hired you for a long-term thing, but I'm just, I'm not sure there's any interest out there whatsoever.
Please.
The appraised value of, of, the appraised value of the system, that's just one criteria. There are several criteria in order for us to be comfortable in selling. Or, or the appraised value, if it's fourteen million, that's one thing. What type of pilot agreement? What type of maintenance agreement? Are you going to provide this, our services for senior citizens and people who are on disability? All of those criteria are included in that RFP, not just the fourteen million, or ten million, or twenty million. There's different things, spider, TIF districts, there's all kinds of things to be taken under consideration in the RFP. So it's not just the appraised value.
Yeah, the mayor's correct. The RFP, so I guess simplistically, you could put a for-sale ad in, in a local publication. I would suggest to you, even without a contract, that's not good business. We would ask the, any prospective new partner, buyer, what would their SEP program look like, their SEPT tank elimination program? We would ask, what would their rates be? Because if the appraised value is fifteen million, fourteen million dollars, we want to know what that is of rates. So we want them to demonstrate, we want to put them through a lot of gyrations and improve that they are the right partner for Beech Grove. What types of programs do they have for seniors and veterans and low income? You know, what are their payment plan options? And that's the time where you are, are putting them on the hot seat, you're inviting them, and they don't have to respond. And, and they willingly come forward and say, hey, we're, we want to foster a relationship and partnership with, with Beech Grove. Some might argue that it's, it's, it may be pointless, because citizens already treat your, your, your wastewater. It could be, I don't know, I have no, I have no predisposition to this. I can tell you right now, utility companies are in acquisition mode, they are, they are very eager to acquire. And it could be that somebody comes in and creates a new plant, at a very affordable price, because it's a long-term investment. I don't know that would be the case. It seems very logical that citizens would take this on, there's, there's eight tunnels being bored underneath Marion County to solve a problem that, quite frankly, Madam Counselor, to your point earlier, was created out of neglect and from a very old system. So the RFP is that time for us to really go through and say, is this the right move for Beech Grove? Counselor?
Yeah, and some of these RFPs, they could be eighty pages long for a community like this, so it's not something we can just, you could, like you said, but it'd be very irresponsible.
Yeah, I, so the, so to give, great point, the RFP in Westfield was, I believe, fifty to seventy pages, the RFP in Sheridan was, an instruction letter was nine. It was a twelve-hundred customer system. So we, we will find a right balance, we're not just going to do a one-pager and expect people to show up and give us a, a very, you know, well-thought-out option and opportunity.
Well, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
The, just the return on investment and the pilot payment is eight hundred thousand, that don't include another thirteen or fourteen salaries. So the one point three million a year that's coming out of that sewer system is, has to be looked at, not the eight hundred thousand.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, because I think it's important to, to keep in the forefront of your mind, today, as I understand it, you control very little of that rate base. You are subordinate to whatever Citizens Energy Group hands you year-over-year, whatever the term is. And so you now have to put your operating capital on top of, and operation revenue needs on top of what they're charging you. So today, you're already subordinate to them in, in a large degree. So you don't have a whole lot of control over what's going on.
I agree, and that's, I know a minute ago, we were concerned about what everyone's going to do here and there. That's probably the least of my concerns, because we have very little control now.
Correct.
But we do have thirteen employees, maybe, might be twelve or eleven, depending on what happens, that I just want to look after during this process, that's all.
And, and I can tell you, it's my understanding, those are, those are shared employees with other divisions within the city, as I understand, they're not solely dedicated to wastewater, is that correct? They're shared across the enterprise?
Yeah, very minimal in the wastewater, most of them are.
So one of the first things in the, in the other two projects I've been involved in was exactly that, what happens to employees. In my most recent project, representing the town of Sheridan, we made sure in the RFP that no jobs were lost because of the transaction. So they were acquired in that acquisition. Now, what happens to their employee after that is up to them to perform, but they didn't lose their job and did not become unemployed because of the transfer of ownership. So if that is a case here, that, that we see that maybe some or all, it's my understanding none, but if, if, if there were some sort of employment affected, we would write that in the RFP that that person or those people would go with the transaction. That's just a requirement of, of, of the deal.
Okay.
If I'm understanding you right, they would no longer be employees of the city of Beech Grove?
If that's the case, I, I, I'm understanding they're cross, they're, they're, they're used in other areas, so you're not going to lose thirteen people out of your public work, because what had happened, I will tell you what happened in the, the Westfield transaction, there were twelve employees solely for water, wastewater. They were cross-trained for both utilities, and they were acquired as part of that transaction. So they didn't lose their job. Now, some chose to leave early, but it wasn't because of the transaction, they sought employment elsewhere. So again, those are things that, that we can discuss, and it's my understanding, that's really not going to be the impact here, unless I'm, I'm sorely mistaken. Bottom line is, employees are protected.
You said that in Sheridan, it was about a five-year process, getting it done?
Yes, sir.
How about, how long did it take for Westfield?
Uh, that was, from the time we went to, we opened up the request for proposal, that was February of two thousand twelve, to the time we filed with the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission was November two thousand twelve. So it was what I did every single day for that period of time. And again, in Sheridan, let's, let's, one thing that contributed to that was a political turnover on their council, they changed law firms, and they, their records weren't the best. That opposite was true in Westfield, everything was ready to go and, and was made accessible. So, you know, there's some other, other barriers in, in the Sheridan transaction.
How about, how about debt?
So debt is defeased, so that's a fancy ten-dollar term for saying, if you have any bonds that are outstanding, right? If you're a bondholder, you've been guaranteed you're going to make a certain rate on that. So if you have, let's say you've got three million, I don't know what the actual number is here in Beech Grove, if you've got three million dollars in bonds, that has to be defeased, meaning that money is set aside in, let's call it an escrow account, where you, as the bondholders, are guaranteed to get your rate of, of return on the bond that you purchased. That is immediately wiped off your books from an indebtedness standpoint. That, that, the, the financial markets and the law says that that has been settled. So if you sell for fifteen million dollars, eighteen million dollars, whatever the number is, that three million dollars goes and defeases and settles that debt, is wiped off your books. And, and you take your net proceeds. So you're going to have professional service fees, you're going to have any debt that needs to be defeased or paid off, and then the net proceeds you take, and, and as I mentioned, in Sheridan, it's about five million dollars, and in the Westfield transaction, it's about forty-six million dollars. They eradicated about forty-five million dollars of debt in their wire transfers. It was very unceremonious, quite frankly. You would think forty-five million dollars would be a lot of fireworks in, in show, and it was, it was done just in wire transfers. So that eliminated about fifty-eight percent of the, of the debt portfolio of the city of Westfield in, in one transaction. Yes, sir.
Would potential buyers for this be foreign investors, American, or either of both?
Uh, I don't know that. And I can tell you that it's United Water here in the United States, its parent company is Suez, it's a, I think it's a Swiss or French company. There's Veolia, I'm not sure who their parent company is.
Could be both.
Could, could happen, but again, the council has the authority to see in...
It's not your issue, your issue is presented.
Yeah.
Hopefully, this council would know that the citizens of Beech Grove do not want their sewer systems sold to somebody in Brazil, but it's not your issue, that's...
Correct, and we would, we would have, in part of the, the RFP, everybody have to disclose who their financials are and their corporate structure. So it couldn't be some shell corporation, it couldn't be, you know, two guys down the street creating LLC and coming in to make some purchase.
Foreign investor, and hopefully, they know that he's American, buy American, sell American.
Sure. So noted, yes. Yes, Mayor?
If I understood you right, you said this project could go on for five years, like Westfield and Sheridan, is that what you said?
So Sheridan's was five years, just because of the slow nature of the process. Matter of fact, a, a water utility worker ran for council seat on the platform, stopped the transaction, and it turned out he was the strongest proponent of the project. In Westfield, it, from the, the time we, again, did the RFP, to the time we got in front of, filed our petition with the Utility Regulatory Commission, was about ten months. So it does, it can be as slow or as, as quick as we, we, we need it to be. I, as an advisor, would say, let's take as much time as reasonably possible to inform your community, and get them comfortable with it.
How long would you estimate, assuming the council wants to do it?
Oh, it, it's not a reasonable, if, if, to, to be in front of the, to file in front of the utility, really, I U R C by August, September, and that's an aggressive timeline, yes. We could, and, and we could protract that as, as needed, but it could, it could be as, as aggressive as that.
Todd, do you have that? I printed out that timetable.
Good.
So just out of curiosity, what this gentleman said, so sometimes, have you ever had, with these buyers of these utilities, is it kind of like selling your mortgage? Do they come around and then sell it off to somebody else?
So what we would do in the asset purchase agreement, we would make sure that you would retain first right of refusal. So if they ever decided to do that...
Okay.
You, in the contract, will have the ability to come back and say, wait, you know, basically, on fair market value, because what's going to happen is they're going to make investments.
Yeah.
And so you would have the first right as the city of Beech Grove to say, wait, we want to buy it back.
Okay.
So you would write that into your contract, give you that permission or that, that protection in the future.
Have you seen something like that?
I have not seen that.
Okay, okay.
Realistically, we're only talking about a small group of folks who would be interested in a transaction like this, correct?
Yeah, the, the most likely, I've, I've mentioned already, certainly Citizens Energy Group would, would be a likely candidate. Indiana American, they're more of a water company than a wastewater company, highly unlikely, but I can't, I can't say yes or no. Aqua, Aqua is, is also, it's a, it's a smaller company, they have a nationwide presence, but they're more of a wastewater than a water company. They do both, but their, their forte is in wastewater. They could, they very well could come in and, and give a viable offer, but we, again, we'd want to go through the process of, what is their offer, how does it impact rates over the long term, and how does that impact the citizens of Beech Grove? Yes, sir.
Would there be an option, when we get to the last stage of the game, to put it on a ballot for the citizens to vote on?
So that's a legal question, and I believe there is a provision in the statute for a remonstrance. I can't cite the, the Indiana Code, but I believe that is, that the code gives place for that, if the, if the citizenry wanted to...
Like you said, it's owned by the citizens, why not give them a chance to, once they're well-informed and...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not well aware of, of where that's happened. I can tell you that the town of Rusheville, west of Kokomo, sold their water company to Indiana American. There were some folks that objected to that, it did go to a remonstrance, it's remonstrance phase, it did go to a ballot, and they ultimately approved the, the sale to Indiana American. But we can certainly look into that, if you, if, if, if the statute allows you to voluntarily put that onto a, a ballot.
Who actually bought Westfield and Sheridan?
So Indiana American bought Sheridan, water and wastewater, and Citizens Energy brought, bought Westfield's water and wastewater.
Did either one of them get above praise, appraised value?
Sheridan, no, it was a distressed utility. Both of those were appraised... Sheridan, no. It was a distressed utility. Both of those were appraised combined about $12 million, and the purchase price was $10 million 750,000 under the distressed utility. And what we did, we, we had both bidders, Aqua and Indiana American, provide us rate impact comparisons based on purchase price. And the council decided they prefer a lower price because they didn't want a negative impact to ratepayers. And so immediately, I can tell you that the transaction, once upon close, they began to make those investments into the infrastructure. And under the I URC, Indiana American has what they call a single-rate tariff, meaning what people pay on their water utilities, what people pay in Kokomo is the same rate that people pay in Sheridan. So it's not dissimilar from Duke Energy or IPL. I am not very familiar with IPL, but in Westfield, Citizens Energy bought it for $16 million above the appraised value at $91 million, simply because they saw the growth potential. Now, I will tell you, in the approval process in front of the OUCC and the, the commission, that became a real issue, because the OUCC intervened and said, that's not right, the ratepayers shouldn't pay for a premium. So it really, it was, it was quite an interesting exercise where the OUCC did their job, because you get a utility come in and say, well, we see the growth potential, and we want to, we'll, we'll pay $100 million. Well, that's not fair to ratepayers. There's also a thing called contributions in native construction. So if, if a developer has come into Beach Grove and installed sewer mains, and they've come to you and said, here, you take them, you take the mains, and you maintain them, you're responsible for them. The cost of that infrastructure was borne by the people in that development. Say if it's a housing development, as an example. So there was about $26 million of contributions in native construction in the Westfield transaction that was not allowed to go into the calculated rate base, because the argument is, ratepayers have already paid for that. They paid for that infrastructure when they bought their home. So why, they're not allowed to pay for that twice. So it's a whole convoluted accounting exercise, but it's, it's, it tells you how, how thoughtful and how intricate the, this process really is.
You're good. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Todd. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the consulting agreement between Conrad Consulting and Training LLC and the city of Beach Grove to develop an RFP for the potential sale of the sewer utility.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
And we better vote individually, beginning on my right.
Aye.
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 Passes 7-0. And one of the things that we have to do during this process is be very transparent. So I'm sure that our consultant will brief the council as often as possible to see where we're at in this process. And just a reminder, this is just to see who is interested and what they would be willing to pay.
And then we could even get updates on email?
Absolutely. I can communicate with the mayor.
Mayor, yes.
My, my intention is to come into this chamber on your monthly meetings and to give you an in-person update as to where we're at.
We'll move on to the last order of new business, and that is, and I'll defer to the clerk, any conflict forms, nepotism, or contracts, any questions? Dan, did everybody turn in?
Uh, no, I think I've gotten, Chris got his, so that's all of them on that side. Bud, Jim, did you?
Bud's here.
Oh, okay. That's right. You passed it up. And Dave, first.
Yeah.
We got him. We're in good shape on him.
And we just sign off on those, and then they get submitted?
You and I. The conflict of interest, I think we have to send it to the clerk of the court downtown, and somebody else. I can't remember who it is. It's been a year since we've done them.
Okay, that concludes new business. I appreciate the council's patience this evening. We'll go to council comments, beginning on my left, buddy.
I got one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The salary ordinance on the.
Yeah. Yeah. Two people got the short end of the stick on the salary orders. That's the clerk and the mayor.
Oh.
So we're going to have to.
Just amend.
Amend the.
The salary ordinance. What actually happened, the 2% was given on the corporation side, but not on the utility side. And we both get paid from both of them.
So should that be for the next meeting, or should we do it right now?
I'd say to keep payroll up to date, it should probably be done now.
Motion to, I'll, I'll accept a motion to amend the salary ordinance to adjust the rate for the mayor and the clerk's address through the sewer utility.
2%.
2%.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Buddy, our counselor?
Okay. Mr. Barrow, I want to thank you for coming forward and, and talking to us. I really do appreciate it. Kathy Chappell, once again, out here. I got to get with you because I want to go out with you on the, your job as far as compliance. And it, this might inter, intermingle some of this stuff along with talking to the police chief. I want to congratulate those that received the council appointments for BZA, Greenscape, and the RDC. I had a, kind of an emergency happen to one of my employees tonight, and it kind of put me off my own game. It seemed like I was thinking about it quite a bit. So I just, I know no one knows who that person is, but it was pretty serious. So if you just keep the thoughts in mind for one of our, one of my employees privately. And with that, I have nothing further to say.
Well, thank you. Everybody showed up tonight, and I think we're on the right track getting the things done. Also, a reminder to everybody, February 9th at the Community Center, the Relay for Life Chili Cook-Off is going to be held from 12 to 3:00. There'll probably be about 30 different pots of chili. Please come and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, and learned a lot tonight on the sale. I appreciate you putting that before us. The other thing I'd tell everybody, I know there's not that many here, but I, again, encourage you to go see the Beach Grove basketball team. They're, they're pretty fun to watch. And besides the mayor, who usually comes, well, Dan was there, and he got excited. Dan was throwing his head up. He was just making.
Dan got excited about something?
That was a good game. But it was, it was a good game, and those boys are playing well. And you know, my wife and I go to these things along with Dennis, and you go to these games. When I was in high school, I mean, we had a bunch of brats. Yeah, there's, there's just not that kind of kids over there, at least the ones I am seeing. Maybe they're hiding, I don't know. But it's, it's, even in the stands, the kids are pretty good. I'm, I'm just encouraged by what I see in the high schools, so.
They're playing hard time.
And, and they're playing good. It's, it's nice to see. And on that note, the JV hadn't lost a game yet, by the way. That's all I got.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out, and have a good night.
Again, thank you, everyone. Wonderful, informative meeting. So thanks, everybody, so much. Let's, let's, just look forward to really good progress for 2019. So let's step it off and keep it going. So thanks to everyone.
Congratulations to Buddy for another year at Pro Tem. The appointees that we appointed tonight, thank you for serving another year, and thank you for everyone else that came out.
I want to thank everyone that came and had a chance to speak. Very informative meeting. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned. I'm not sure what time, Dan.
8:44.
8:44.
Yep.